Wayne, you're muted.
How about now?
There you go.
All right, sorry, it wasn't plugged in right. So, start again. Welcome to the Selectman Meeting, January 28th at 6:30. I'll call the meeting in order. Can I get a roll call, please?
Veronica Kell, present.
Joseph Shank, present.
We mail a Shank present. It's been a long day. So, work session, meeting with the Housing Authority, Affordable Housing Trust, and the Worthy Fund. Do you guys have to call your meeting in order?
Yeah, I'll call to meet our Townsend Housing Authority Joint Meeting, where is Selectmen and the Trust Fund? At 6:30, 2 P.M. and I'll call for a roll call, please, of the Housing Authority members.
Natalie Call, present.
Chaz Sexton-Duranian, present.
Laura Schiffer, and present. I don't see Corden. Thank you.
Okay, okay, first one, coordinating request for assistance. Who wants to take this one?
I will. I think that one of the reasons that I wanted this meeting was because of an experience with two applicants for assistance at the end of December. And I just thought that, right now, we have the Worthy Funds assistance, we have the CMHA through the Townsend Housing Authority, those funds available, we have fuel assistance and other assistance through CDBG, and I really thought it would be good to kind of make a flowchart. If someone presents themselves saying that, "I am in need, can you help me?" to the town, then I think we kind of need a flowchart. Is it because of COVID? If it is COVID-related, where do we send the person? If it isn't COVID-related, where do we send the person? If it is COVID-related, what sort of assistance do they need? Is it something that housing can help with, or could fuel assistance benefit either? So, I kind of wanted to review, it's the second thing on the agenda, review the requirements for each program, and then have a meeting or have a discussion about that flowchart, a decision tree. Where do we go? Where do we send someone for what? And then, who are the responsible people for each of those? Where, who do you contact? Where do you get sent? And, oh, by the way, how are we advertising this? I know that until the end of December, I had lived in town for 35-plus years, and I had no idea that it was possible to get any sort of assistance from the town. So, I think, I mean, I knew these funds, you see them at town meeting, et cetera, et cetera, but you don't really think about what exactly they are. So, I thought we should discuss, what are the requirements for each of these possibilities? And then build a decision tree for that and identify a responsible individual. So, Wayne, back to you.
Joan, can I, can I, I see another one of my board's members is here. Can I say hello? Can we call ourselves in here?
You should.
Thanks. So, Joan Savoy from the Townsend Affordable Housing Trust Chair, and I see Mike, you're here. Can you say hello, please?
Hey, how's it going, everyone? It's Mike Verasco.
Thank you. And Joe is also on your board, correct, Joe?
No. I resigned from the board when I got elected.
Okay, so we are in need of another board member there, then?
Yes, we couldn't have me being a seated Selectman and Wayne also being on the board, so I had to step down.
You beat me to it.
The right thing to do.
I think let's start with the Worthy Fund, because that's been established for a number of years. I've only had to do one in my three years. So, Jimmy, if you want to give a little background on that one?
Actually, we have Renee, and she's been at for a lot longer, so she probably is a little more conversant in it than I would ever be. So, I don't know, Renee, if you want to kind of give everybody that might not be familiar with the funds, kind of the nickel tour?
Okay, I'm actually a member of the Abram French Fund. That was an amount of money that was left to the town by Martha Homer in memory of her father, Abram French. The interest from which was to be used to help what she called the Worthy Poor, people who were in need of help through no fault of their own, you know, just having some bad times. There are also two funds, I believe, that the Selectmen administer, which are similar, was money that was left to the town. Hers is a little different in that she actually said there will be three people who are not connected, you know, with the rest of, like, the Selectmen group, et cetera, who will determine what, you know, who should receive this money. And she was very concerned about it being very confidential, that no one else would know but these three people. So, it's a little different in that, you know, we're, we make those decisions, like, by ourselves, and the money that's left in that fund is very, very small. It collected interests for many, many years, but then we went through some tough times, like in the 80s and, or was it during the 80s, I guess, that's when the interest built up, and then we hit some low points in the economy, and we were just going through money like crazy. So, there's not a whole lot of money that's left in there, but there still is a sizable amount in the two accounts that the Selectmen administer. What happens is if somebody needs some help paying for their rent, or paying utility bills, or putting a new roof on their house, they will fill out a form that we have developed over a good number of years. They have to provide proof of, you know, where they live and how much money they make. And then we decide whether we can help them or not. Sometimes, we can't do the whole amount, because obviously, we're trying to be fair to everybody who lives in town. And for the most part, it's a one-time, a one-time help. Now, we have helped some people who have extraordinary problems more than once, but, you know, not back-to-back years. It's, they would have to, you know, wait some time before they would be helped again. Does anybody have any questions about?
No, Renee, I want to thank you very much for doing this, and this is a valiant effort, and I always appreciate other people that are in the human services business to help other people. So, I thank you for everything you've done.
Oh, you're quite welcome. It's been a pleasure.
So, I think the decision tree on this one's pretty simple, because it's a request that comes through Town Hall, that's confidential, it's a one-off thing. It's not a larger system that gets put through a state for a federal grant or anything like that. And like, we've just, both of us discussed, it's very rare. It's like, once a year, we get one or two. Like I said, I've only had one, and I think Veronica just had one last month or this month.
And the reason for this, so before saying, "Oh, it's just this," there were two requests that came in right before Christmas. And one of them, we did go through the Worthy Funds. The second one seemed to fit more into COVID, but the person felt like they should be covered under the Worthy Fund. And so, I really think we need to define that. When is it a Worthy Fund request, and when is it a COVID-related request? And how do we suss that out, and who determines that? I mean, it's true that for the COVID Funds, the CMHA Funds, which maybe Joan can explain some of that before we make decisions, but you can go directly to CMHA, but you might not know that. And so, you call the town. So, who takes that call? How do people find out about this to begin with, you know? I mean, how do people find out? It wouldn't ever occur to me to call the town of Townsend if I were in need of assistance. That's me. Other people may be differently, but it would not occur to me to do that. I would probably go to a social service agency. They might say, "Oh, you live in Townsend. We know about this. Go there." But it isn't something that I would think to do. So, anyway, I think it would be good. So, we had two requests, and one of them was handled through the Worthy Funds. The other one, anyway, we need a process for this, is all I'm saying.
May I say something?
Sure.
My initial thought in just being in this field, the confidentiality of the individuals is extremely important, and I agree with Renee, and I agree with the benefactor in regards to having the issue of confidentiality. I believe that since there has been somewhat of a process in place for the Worthy Fund, that might be a point of contact area where they determine whether or not it's a Worthy Fund issue or it's another issue. And if it is a, it doesn't sound to me like it's, you know, a process. It goes into one individual. If that individual or individuals, I'm assuming there's three on the board, Renee, right? For the Worthy Fund, you said?
Actually, right now, we're doing it because, because this, the Abram French Fund does not have a whole lot of money left, we are actually going through the Selectmen. So, when we have a request, we have one person from the Abram French Fund Committee, one person from the Selectmen, and either Carolyn or Jim. So, there's three people who are, yes, who are deciding.
This is in your package, Chaz. It's the administration of Worthy Funds. So, that's what Renee was just explaining. There is a policy on this. It is a Selectmen policy that was set up in 2014.
Right, so when that policy comes through, who gets the, let's say, you know, person X calls into Town Hall, who does it go to? Who is that person?
I'd say Carolyn probably talks to them first.
Okay, so it goes, it goes to, there is a point of contact, and what I'm saying is, that point of contact is the one that should be able to direct it to the individual with the Worthy Funds to figure out if it's a Worthy Fund issue or not. That individual, then, if it's not a Worthy Fund issue, should then turn it over to the other agency or the other board that's dealing with it. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think you're onto something there, Chaz, because if that is truly a single point of contact, that one, it'll keep the confidentiality, because it's only coming to one person.
Yes.
Comes through the Selectmen's Office. And then, I think Veronica, I think the simplest thing to do would be assign one of us to assist Jim on the decision, which way it should go, and then we point it in the direction that it should go.
Jim has a little diagram. So, are you able to screen share, Jim?
I could, but it'll probably hurt people's heads, so I'll just talk through it. Because I think this is, I literally just did this listening to you all talk. I think to Chaz's point, it might be the inverse, because Worthy Funds are broadly available for, whether it's rent, or fuel, or utility, or grocery, or medical. So, the thing that I just flipped over to Veronica in a text message is, imagine that decision tree that starts with a box on top that is Citizen of Townsend, that's in need. Beneath that is the town, from which there, at least for now, during COVID, Veronica? I thought you were gonna say that.
The diamond there, where it says Citizen, you have the arrow, you need it to a diamond. COVID going off one side, not COVID going off the other.
I'm not, I'm not the, I can just have the thought of it, so somebody that's done it before can do it. But for right now, we have COVID and non-COVID, which isn't usually the case, right? So, normally, it's all just need, and then where do they go? But for at least now, we'd have a Citizen in need. If it's COVID, yes, it would drop down to specifically, if it's rental or mortgage, drop down to, are they income-eligible? If yes, is there urgency? If no, it could go through the Affordable Housing Trust. If it's urgent, imminent eviction, children, winter, then the arrow would run back to the other side, where the Worthy, or Abram French, or the other locals. Yep.
On the, instead of sending it to TAHT, although we could, I suppose, I would probably, well, no, TAHT might be the right place for them to suss out the next set.
Right, to funnel it through. That's the town contact, instead of sending them blindly off to some agency outside of the town, because we're presuming these are vulnerable people. Vulnerable people that, to the extent that we can keep it local and give them a hand to hold locally, I think keeping it at TH, TAHT, and then through THAT getting to Central Mass would probably be better. If it's not urgent, then it goes through that chain. If it's rental or mortgage, and they're not income-eligible, it can't go through the Affordable Housing Trust and Central Mass. Then that diagram, whoever's smart enough to draw arrows or diamonds, flips over to the other side of the equation, which is the local funds that have more discretion.
Here's the thing. All right, the urgency piece of it. Right now, under COVID, I think that evictions are not a thing.
We hope.
They will eventually be, but they're not right away.
I don't know that, though, officially, Veronica. I know that that's the law, and that's how it's supposed to be. But if I'm one of the three seated members of the Worthy Fund applicant, application process, and it's painted as ugly as it can, it's a single parent with kids, with illness, and lost their job, I don't want to rely on the fact that that landlord that I don't know is going to abide by the law and say, "It's okay, we can put you in this channel, which might take longer, because you're not going to get evicted." If it's that urgent, and we have the ability to process something on the other side of the equation through the in-town funds in a matter of days, I wouldn't want to be the one that's rolling the dice that they're not going to get chucked out on the street. That's all. That's why I put that urgency piece in this chart.
It might be that it's both. You apply at CMHA, and then you go to Worthy. It might be that it's both, depending on the situation.
As far as the emergency piece is concerned, I've been doing this a very, very long time, Jim, and there is no urgency when it comes to human services, period. You know, there is a promise to pay at some point, and some landlords, it may get six weeks, eight weeks, 10 weeks down the road. So, CMHA is actually following in line with how this has been for a very, very long time. I do appreciate where you're coming from when it comes to that. My concern is the amount of the possible influx of citizens that were going to come in for this particular thing. I am seeing drastic increases in requests for a lot of things outside of the town efforts that I'm seeing. And my concern is I don't want to have to, you know, drain one bucket before we get the other bucket full. That's my major concern right now. The way that the CMHA is set up is that they will notify the landlord and tell the landlord that, yes, they've met criteria, and yes, they will be getting funding, but the funding probably is not going to happen for several weeks. But the promise to pay will be there, you know, initially. But my concern is, if it's something that, outside of that timeframe, if it's something that is going to be held with those federal funds, that's where the, you know, the request really should go.
I agree completely, Chaz, that those pieces are there, in my experience as well, that the promise to pay should be sufficient. My experience, however, with these funds is that urgency can be met quickly. And in fact, I talked to Renee about it, but in the short time that I've been around, we have had people that have come in with no heat and needing oil, and in two days, a warrant's been cut, and they have oil.
Yep, and that's different than the rental and the mortgage assistance.
Agreed, agreed.
So, I'm in agreement with you there as well.
So, yeah, those sorts of things, utilities. So, that's the other thing. I guess we need to come back to the flowchart here to make sure we agree on what we're doing. But for things like fuel assistance, I guess what I want to do before we get there is, in your packet, there was a spreadsheet with the amounts that are in these funds, and there were two that were yellowed.
Yep.
One was the Albert J. Atwood Worthy Fund. That is a Worthy Fund. The one that Renee talked about is also in yellow, the Abraham French Welfare Fund. And that's the one that she was talking about, and correct me, Renee, if I'm wrong. But there's the third fund, the Amanda E. Dwight Worthy Fund, is also a Worthy Fund. The thing about these is, once we spend them down, we're done. So, if in 2026, there is another pandemic, or there's urgency, we, the town, will not have those funds if we spend them all now. If we have the ability to get people to the federal funding for, or for the CMHA, the mortgage and rental assistance, or to direct them to what we haven't talked about yet, the CDBG fuel assistance, then I really, my opinion is that we should send them there first, provided they aren't being put out on the street. So, that's just my thought.
That's, oh, you can't see it on the screen, but that's the far-left-hand side of my chicken scratch, which is CDBG on fuel assistance. Again, income eligibility becomes a critical path item there. If they're income-eligible, then it drops down to the COG process, or whomever is going to be the point of contact, if that's to change. If they're not income-eligible, then it shifts back over to the other side of the house again, to the internal funds.
Right, and again, Veronica, my thought for having a point of contact is that, for instance, I'm not, I'm not quite privy to the whole situation that happened at Christmas, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna propose this, because I see this happening probably in the next month or so. Somebody's coming in with a request, and there could be a portion that the Worthy Fund could be able to work with, like the immediacy for utilities, fuel assistance, or the like. So, a part, we could parse it to a portion of it to the Worthy Fund, and the other portion can go, if it's rental or whatever, can go to, you know, to the grant management company that we're using. That's why I'm feeling that there has to be a point of contact that knows the ins and outs on everything that's available for the individual, so that when they do put in the application, we're able to, you know, this portion needs to go here, and this portion needs to go here, so that we do our due diligence and not, you know, overspend any of the accounts that we have.
So, I guess.
Veronica, do you want to try to clean up that chicken?
Not at this instant, but I'll take it tomorrow, and I'll make a flowchart, a proper flowchart. But I'll take this, and I just need to make sure that I understand what we're doing. And who that single is, is the Selectmen's Office, the single point of contact for all of this? In other words, that if, at the first junction, COVID or not COVID, the first decision on the decision tree, if it's not COVID, it goes to Worthy. Or I would even put it, if it's not housing or utilities, if it's something other than housing and utilities, I would send it to the Worthy Fund.
Because that could be food, it could be a lot of other different things.
Right, so I think I would say not housing or utilities. Is there anything else that the CARES Act funds that we got will cover? Not housing or utilities?
No, the CARES Act money that we have is for rental and mortgage assistance, but, you know, a lot of people do not know about the TEO, food distribution.
Well, I think that then goes, so if it's not housing or fuel, I guess I would say, right now, we might have to change this once those funds run out. But if it's not housing or fuel, we will send it to the Worthy Fund. Does that sound right, Renee?
I think that's a good way to do that. And we do usually, well, we always ask, do you, do you, or do you belong to TEO? Do you receive there? And it's amazing how many people have no idea what TEO is. I, at one point, talked to someone there and said, "Could you change your name to Town Food Bank?"
That's what I said.
So that it would, you know, when it's advertised out there, "Oh, TEO is doing this," you know, it would be clear that it's a food bank. If it's a food bank and you need food, you're probably going to take a shot at calling them. But, you know, somehow, I think they have to identify themselves as a food bank if you want to advertise that.
I also think we need that on the front page, we need a link on the front page of the town webpage. It should be right there.
You know, that's a great idea.
And another place for it would be, I see that we have a couple TCAM people here, would be to run it on Channel 9, to somehow put the advertising for this on Channel 9. That might be, okay?
But again, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stress this. I'm, we have to be, we have to make sure that something is very streamlined. There should be, in my mind, there should be one direct contact, and it could be, you know, the Townsend Relief, or however, whatever we want to name it, so that it goes into that one confidential area, so that that area could then disseminate that information to the departments that it needs to go into.
Is there a person here in town who knows something about all of these things? Yes.
That's what this meeting is going to determine.
I am only learning, Joan, I'm sorry. Dave had a question or a comment before we.
A comment about the TEO. We can do something with TCAM, obviously, to post information. But if the Selectmen, I'm not going to speak on their behalf, but if the Selectmen would like to contact TEO, get in touch with Kim Craven. I've been volunteering once a month with them for food distribution up on the Hill. And so, I know she's the one you would want to talk to, to maybe discuss whatever you need to discuss with her involving food.
I think then, okay, I'm taking Jim's chicken scratches, and I'm rearranging them.
Re-doing them.
So, I have where, I have where we had, is it COVID? I'm putting, is it housing or fuel? If it, if the answer is yes, we drop down to TAHT. If it, if the answer is no, it's not housing or fuel. I have it right now at the Worthy Fund. And then I have a diamond there that says "food needed," or "food assistance question." And if it's yes, they'll send it to TEO. But then it also has to come back in to the next diamond that says, so it isn't fuel, food, they don't need it, but they're going to come back, even if they need food, they're going to come back, and Worthy Fund is going to go from there.
Yep.
So, in other words, is that okay with you, Renee, to be the asker about?
Sure, about the food.
I think there's a distinction we have to make about the housing, though. For the COVID rental and mortgage relief assistance is only if it's COVID-related. So, if someone does not work, say, is on public assistance, they're not going to get the COVID CARES money.
Okay, so we come down. Okay. So we come down, so it was not housing or fuel, the answer was yes. Okay. If it was no, we sent them off to Renee. If it's yes, then we send them to the housing folks. And if you, then you will suss out COVID or not COVID.
Right.
If it is COVID, if the answer is yes there, then you go to the CARES Act funding.
Correct.
If, if the answer is no, it's not COVID related, then drawing an arrow back up here to Worthy. That's what I'm doing.
Yep.
Uh, and I'm not putting urgency in here because I, I think urgency is hard to define.
But it's all urgent, to be quite honest.
It's all urgent. To the person making that call, it is urgent. So I'm not going to put a flow in for that. I think we should trust the people that are doing the intake here and following this decision tree.
Just a, a quick question. Does the town have mental? Where, where does someone who has mental health service needs go in this town? Is that something we could include in the link?
That would go through the healthcare system, I think.
And from a, from a senior citizen perspective, there is, there's, um, the Council on Aging and the, the Senior Center staff act as a facilitator. If, uh, part of the senior population has social service needs, mental health needs, they can coordinate that. But generally speaking, unlike a larger community that might have a social worker, that acts as the gatekeeper, we don't. That's, that's outside of what we've, at least to my knowledge, what we've done.
Just thinking that we should put all these little things and little boxes on the side of that, that form just so people go, oh, look, you know, my, my, my mother is depressed, let me send her here, you know?
We don't really want to get in the business of human services or, or.
Yeah, that's kind of off topic here.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
We don't have the capacity for that. It's something to think about maybe for futures, but it, but it's not, um, where we are.
I mean, does everyone know about the Senior Center that gives meals, that, that they give meals?
I think they advertise very well.
I think they do too. I do think, I mean, I would know where to get meals if I, and who to call. I wouldn't know where to go if I, if I couldn't pay my mortgage or I couldn't pay my rent.
So the two things, Veronica, since we're redoing, redoing the website, this is a nice little thing to add in the COVID.
I agree.
Section.
Yeah.
Um, so why don't, so for the flow chart or the diagram, whatever you want to call it, that you and Jim are chicken scratching back and forth to, um, if you could take a stab at that and maybe we could look at it Tuesday night in a little more cleaner fashion.
We have everybody here tonight and I agree with you, we should do that. But I want to talk about one other thing and that's fuel. Um, if, if, if it's housing or fuel, I'm going yes. Before I send them to housing, I'm going to put a diamond in there, a decision block. And if it is fuel, um, that's going to go to CDBG?
Well, we have one small issue there in that that fuel assistance has been available, like for instance, all last winter and even for this winter. And zero dollars of that $26,250 available for fuel assistance has been given to this residence, income eligible residence. So I don't know how that gets jump started.
Okay. Um, I, I don't know about the process there, but before we talk about that, can we talk about the decision? So if it's housing or fuel, we're dropping down to a block where people could go two ways. They could need housing and fuel, or they could just need fuel, or they could just need housing. So that's three ways.
Correct.
Um, so, uh, sure you don't want this back, Jim?
I've got another one going here already.
Okay. So we have to, so three ways for that. Housing alone, fuel alone, or housing and fuel. So I, I, I have to think about this for drawing. Okay. So if it is, and then if it's housing related, COVID or not COVID, and then we go back. All right. So I will.
Can I, could I, I, I think there might be a step beyond, above all of this, which is citizen in need, income eligibility, because.
We can't do that. We cannot do that.
Well, to a certain degree, we're going to send them down a bunch of different steps in this decision-making tree, only to find out that we, they're not income eligible. Whereas if we had some, while it won't be dispositive, it can be, I know from the, from the Worthy Funds, you know, we, we, we asked for some financial information, we asked for, you know, their employment. Um, because we could go through how, housing, uh, fuel and down the COVID, non-COVID, down further. We could get to a point where they're, they're not income eligible and we could have had them on the other side of the chart to begin with.
I think that it's a confidentiality thing and I don't think, I mean, the, the, the trust fund, um, team, you know, from the Worthy Trust Policy, they can ask that and they will keep it confidential. But I don't think the intake person, um, to me, it's, it's not a good idea to ask that. It's to take it, see where they need it, you know, where they meet. I see what you're saying, but I, I think it's a confidentiality piece that I, I personally would not want to be the person intaking and saying, so, how much do you make? Where do you work?
The, the, any time that in, in, I mean, I'm in the biz. Any time that it comes down to, um, asking confidential information like that, you're with a specialist. You wouldn't want to do that with an intake person.
So I see what you're saying. You know, you could get all the way down to CMHA and find out you are not income eligible.
Right.
And, and so you get kicked back to Worthy, but, um.
But that's the risk that you'd have to take, right? I mean.
I, I, whoever the point person is, there's a very simple chart on showing whether someone is, is income eligible for the CMHA.
We provide that information to them.
Yep.
But we cannot ask them for the information.
Right. I'll get you that chart.
They could self-certify. They could self-certify which leg they're going to go down, but we shouldn't be in the position of asking and making that determination.
Right.
Correct. Correct.
Exactly.
Good. Good.
But I think the, the, the point person would be the one to, to be able to, to make sure, you know, that they, A, they're asking the right questions and B, they're, they're putting them in contact for the areas that they need. Because i- if they are in need in regards to rent, I'm pretty sure that they're probably going to need fuel assistance and they're probably going to need some help with, with food. Um, you know, this is, this is, the important thing is that we want to be able to address what we can address as quickly as possible. If it's something the Worthy Fund can do, that's good, TEO, we can get them sent off to there. You know, and, and at least we can, we can lessen the burden. And that's the goal of what we're trying to do, is lessen the mental burden on these individuals.
All right. So, um, uh, can we assign people to these, um, these places? Like the income person, that is the, um, I, I think it would be nice, two things. I think it would be nice to have an email address called, uh, COVID Relief or Townsend Relief. Um, that someone could email, uh, an inquiry, you know, who do I talk to? Um, and then it's also the BOSS Office. Then we can advertise both ways. Is that correct?
Right. I, I think if you're going to have an email address generally for Townsend Relief or COVID Relief and you know that you, you have to have by the, the bequests of the funds, it be in the Selectman's Office, you probably want to make that one of the same.
Okay.
Right? Because otherwise you could have people proceeding down different paths, not knowing that it, there's a, there's a flow chart or decision tree that says it should be going someplace else. So I think it should be one point of contact that this thing gets locked down and everybody agrees. And there's one point of contact that, that knows where it goes.
Okay. So if it gets shifted to the Worthy Fund, that would be the Abram French, um, Board?
Probably not right now, as Renee said, because they've, they're nearly spent down, you know, so.
No, well, no, no, no. It's, it's their board members who would, would, they would choose one person for the Worthy Fund group.
Gotcha.
Um, so whoever the chair is of the Worthy Fund team, whatever the, I don't know if it's a board or it's a committee or whatever.
Yep.
Um, they could then, um, call the meeting of the team, the, not their team, but the policy team for Worthy Funds. Does that make sense, Renee? Do you think that makes sense?
Yeah, I didn't quite follow what you were saying there.
All right.
If it's go, if it's going to go to that side, that it's going to go to the Worthy Fund.
Right. You would be notified, you or.
Okay.
Your team. You would be notified and then you would follow the policy to contact the Select Board and the TA and say, we need to have a meeting. Does that work?
It's generally, it's generally the opposite.
Yeah, I was going to say, it's generally the other way around. Usually Carolyn calls me.
Comes into the town.
Yeah.
Selectman's Office. And then if it's Carolyn or if it was Jody, when Jody was in the chair.
Right.
Renee gets called and said, hey, we have an application. Can you, you know, can you get together in the next couple of days or a week, whatever it is? And then whichever selectman draws the short straw is the way it's worked. They get dragged in and, I mean, that's just the way it, the way it has flowed. And I think if you tried to flip it, it's going to be a little more difficult to track down Renee, private citizen slash Abram French member than it is having that one governmental contact.
Okay.
And then I would have to get back to, you know, the Secretary of the Selectmen and in order to get those other people together. So this would just taking out one step.
Okay. So then that's good. I've got that. On the other side, if they're going to, um, the Housing Authority, um, there's a little more sussing out that has to occur there. Who is doing that?
Well, right, right now, the way it's been working, I mean, Joan, you're right there. And if you get contacted as a member of the Affordable Housing Trust or if a member of the Housing Authority gets contacted, you're funneling them with the information right to CMHA, A, B, C, D, E acronym, right?
I'd be, I'd be glad to.
Well, how's it happening now? How are people applying now?
They're going, well, they're reading the public service announcements that many people in this call have been kind enough to disseminate and then they're going straight, they're going straight to CMHA online and applying directly.
Yeah, they're going directly to the third party. But the, the, my concern in, in that is that, you know, it, it really should be going to our administrative assistant. It should, any calls for housing should go be directly to, to Jody. And Jody then is, is able to find the requests, see what, what the needs are. She reports back to the Chair, uh, in regards to, um, you know, where, where to handle this. And then we, we get it off to the right people. If it needs to go to, to the, the trust fund or it needs to go, go elsewhere. Um, if, if they need to be directed to state funding or state issues, then Jody sends it to me. So, you know, it, it depends on how it comes in. As long as it goes through Jody, we, we tend to, to be able to handle it relatively quickly.
Um, so if it's housing or, and fuel, I'm going to send that to Jody. I'm going to put responsible people. So there's going to be a column next to the decision tree. This is where this person falls. This is where, um, the next person falls.
Why would fuel go to, why would fuel go to Jody?
Well, because I have a diamond that says housing or fuel. That's why.
Fair enough.
Um, but we can, we can change that however we want. So whatever makes sense. So are you saying only housing goes to Jody?
No, no, I was just wondering, just because I know that fuel, fuel could live on the CDBG, which is the Fuel Assistance under the Board of Selectmen through COG. It could be Worthy, but it's definitely not Townsend Affordable Housing Trust, COVID Mortgage and Rental Relief. So I don't know where fuel lines up with housing in that, in that tree.
Let me get to my, uh, agenda here. Um, okay. So maybe we need to have, so section E. Um, all right. So, um.
And I saw Jody look up and her eyes went really big when you said, it can go to Jody.
Um, if we were, um, this is for argument's sake, Veronica. If we were a voucher, um, if we had a voucher program here, voucher is section eight, fuel assistance would go into that voucher program through the Housing Authority. If we were a voucher, uh, if we did do the voucher program, but we don't. Um, in, in other agencies, the, usually the Housing Authority will do the fuel assistance. Um, my concern is that it is, as Jim says, there, it, it's in between two different offices and it's kind of in a quagmire. So i- I don't feel that fuel assistance is getting dressed, addressed appropriately. So instead of figuring out who has it, we should just assign it to someone um, in some area so that we can definitely do that. So that, you know, especially in this time, at least the citizens know that we are going to be addressing it uh, as rapidly as we're addressing housing and, and food and all this other, uh, the other areas.
And to that point, Chaz, I agree. Right now, we have fuel assistance money on the table. To Joan's point, it's not been disseminated and distributed. But we do have a bucket of fuel assistance money that is currently under contract with COG, which is CDBG, which is Select Board. So if, if we can cut a separate deal within that existing contract that says it slides over to, you know, be administered by the Affordable Housing Trust, then that's great. But right now, it, it, it does live under the contract between the town and COG. We can discuss whether they're doing a good job with it or not separately, but you know, we are what we are right now. We're not a voucher program. We have the money, but it is in contract with COG. So how do we, how do we get that elevated into people's, you know, vision so they can use it?
And, and I would like to, I'd like to bring, um, um, the Chair of the Housing Authority, Lori, into this conversation because the Housing Authority had asked me to look into this, to, to see what we can do to help out, to, to at least get the advertising out, to get, um, the word out to the town, much like we did for the COVID Relief Funds that we assisted with the Affordable Housing Trust. So I don't have a, I personally, and I'm speaking for me, I'm not speaking for the Board, the, the Housing Authority. I don't have a problem helping market, uh, and advertise something like that. Um, the processing of these things are going to go to COG, but I want to make sure that COG is going to be able to act accordingly and swiftly on these requests as well.
That we lose that, we lose that fuel on April 30th, we lose the fuel money on April 30th, 2021.
So I, I guess what I'm hearing is there's not enough advertisement out there for the citizens to be able to find out about that. Is this kind of correct?
Yep.
I think that's fair. Yeah.
All right. So now.
Joe, there has, there, if we can have, that's why I'm concerned about having a central point of contact. Because anything that has to do with fuel assistance, housing, rental, mortgage, uh, food, all of that kind of stuff, there has to be a central number or a central area that these people can call in to get them to the right areas.
All right. So just, we're in such tough times right now. We have those big display signs we put up for different times. Why don't we just get something on them, put them in two parts of the town? Say something that just everyone driving by gets to see it and just do it for a month. I mean, we own the signs, it don't cost us anything. Let's just start saying, hey, if you need help, call this.
Yeah.
Great idea.
Strategic places, don't put them in kind of common, put them so. There's enough qualified people to put what we need on their point of contact. As you said, Chaz, just get them up, get them running and leave them for a month. That's how we help people.
Yep.
We've got to get, we've really got to get going on that fuel assistance. We've got like 26 grand, that's a lot of fuel, but we need to get it out.
Use it. Absolutely.
So let's talk about, can we talk about fuel assistance in just one second?
Um, yeah, but please don't forget, Veronica, please don't forget, I have to talk about the CMHA stuff.
Okay. But what I want to do is get the flow chart made. I'm going to do that. Wayne had suggested bringing it to the Selectman's meeting on. Wayne had suggested bringing it to the Selectmen's meeting on Tuesday. I will put it together tomorrow and get it out to all of you by Monday. And I'm going to put responsible people next to it and then we can adjust it however. But just so that we have names and, you know, the flow and names, I'm going to put the advertising suggestions up at the top because that's the most important. So the signage, the Channel 9 stuff, the website, et cetera, et cetera.
And. Can I say something, please? Because I've just been listening, nobody's heard me say anything. As you're doing the chart, conversations are all good and everything. I have a comment about the rental assistance and the mortgage assistance. And in reference to the chart that you're doing, for future sake, when you refer to who's going to do what, have it be the position in town. Don't use people's names.
I will do that.
Okay. And to the other comments about how did we advertise, I think once Chaz had the flyer ready, it was up on Facebook, it was on the Townsend page, it was on, I had it on real estate page. The flyers were distributed where they could. And I know that Joan is going to report on the applicants. Now, I personally know people that as of February 1st, which is coming right around the corner, will be four months behind in their rent. And there are others in town who are more than four months behind in their rent. Some of them have out of area landlords, some of them have in town landlords. The state or the nation doesn't care about the landlords, but it's a cost factor to them. It is costing them a lot of money to house all of these people. And it's only going to get worse because the housing isn't there for the people that are coming in.
Well, I will just say that I know that there are laws around eviction and I know that there is support available for people who are, you know, run businesses. That might include those that run businesses that are.
I'll tell you something personally. My business was off 50% last year for rentals and for sales, 50%. In June, well, actually last April, I applied for a loan to run my business last year. In June, June 12th, I was approved for a loan. They sent me loan documents, which I signed and sent back to them. I never got a check. Okay? So it isn't what it's all cracked up to be and what they tell you. The money is not getting into the hands of a lot of people. I've heard this from people in Lemonster, I've heard it from people in, in many areas who applied for loans that never got the loan they were supposed to get. And these are all small business people, not the big people, not the big businesses. And I know that they deserve to get the money because they need to employ a lot of people. But small businesses.
We also have micro enterprise funds available for smaller businesses. I know there's a flyer at Town Hall about that and it's on the webpage. But I think for, for this that we're doing, we're trying to get the money so that the landlords do get paid, so.
Right. And I'm telling you that I personally know that they keep, for the last three weeks, I know two, two different landlords who were supposed to be called by the agencies by the Friday of the last three weeks, neither have yet been called.
Probably because they have such a big backlog, they're doing what they can.
Okay, but when you say it's just going to be weeks, it's not going to be weeks. It'll be four months or five months. That's what I'm, I'm telling you real life, I'm not telling you what you're being told by an agency.
Okay, so tell me about the, I'm going to make a chart, I'm going to put who to contact next to it, we're going to work on the advertising and we'll go from there, I guess.
I think that's a perfect plan.
I think you're doing a good job.
Lori, we're shaking as many trees as we can, as hard as we can, please. I gotta tell you, we're, we're trying, everybody here is working so hard.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, true.
Just question, so can we just, do we have to take a vote to have somebody in particular to say what they want on them electronic signs and tell whoever we need to, to just get them up?
Let's think about it. And that could be part of the Veronica's and Jim's discussion tomorrow or Monday, whenever we get this flow chart out as to what it should say. And then, you know, Tuesday, we can vote on it and finalize it. I want this done. I think, I think Veronica, you have it. Something's echoing. I think you got a good handle on what, what it looks like, at least on scratch paper.
I can get started.
Yeah, so I think.
I have to be things tweaked, but we can put, between what Jim has already done and what we've just talked about and my chicken scratches, I think we can put something together to discuss on Tuesday.
Yeah, and I think the three of us can come up with some easy, I just need to know from Jim, you know, how many characters we can have on the, the sign, because I know there is a limit.
So, yeah. Can I, Wayne, can I go on?
To what?
Next thing on the agenda, kind of. For correspondence, I think that the Worthy Fund correspondence can be left as it is. I, I know that, and so that I'm not going to worry about so much. I wanted to coordinate the presentation and I think that the flow takes care of that. So no paperwork needs to change, in my mind. You all agree with that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. I, I, I know that CMHA, you wanted to talk about funds, is that right?
Well, I want to talk about, they, they are so slammed, they are so understaffed, you know, they're all working remotely, but I, I did have a conference call today and I have an update on the number of applicants that have been submitted by townsfolk, which is eye opening. And last night, the Townsend Affordable Housing Trust Board voted to ask for more COVID cares funds. And Jim did supply me the amount that's available in toto to the town. So we want to talk about that at the end maybe, but this is, this is what they've got right now. So for the COVID cares rental and mortgage assistance, they have one app approved for $1,790. They have nine that will be approved like very soon. And the average ask for those 10 was $2,300 per, you know, for the average of the 10. Two were submitted, there were another two submitted where the people made too much money. So out of those 12 applications, we had a sixth that weren't any good. So I'm going to extrapolate those numbers into, they have 22 new apps sitting there that they haven't vetted because the paperwork's not complete. So there are another 22. So if I take a six of that, we're down to another, say, 18. So if I do a little math, I add those 18 to the 10, at $2,300 each, that's a plus with the 10% we have to pay CMHA to manage, that's $70,800. And by the way, the minute the person is approved, they do send correspondence, they'll do snail mail or email to the landlord, mortgage holder and the person. But they, they also mentioned to me, they want to be able, there are some cases, and it's by case by case basis, they are allowed to pay future rent. So when they know someone that, for instance, she's, the woman told me there are two people that have no jobs at all, that completely lost their jobs, and they'd like to consider them to give them a rental stipend, and she said it's typically up to three months. So that's a thing, but no one would get, at this point, no one's going to get more than 4,000, which is what we initially, we were hoping maybe we could go higher, but it, I, I don't know if A, there's the, the demand at this time, but also we just don't have the dough. So if I go back though to the 18 that are in-house that haven't been vetted yet, if I figure that nine of those are at $2,300, that's 20,700. And I figure another nine are at $4,000 because the clock's ticking, right? Things are adding up, that's $36,000. Then I add the nine existing that I'm figuring at $2,300. That's $84,800 with CMH's, CMHAs, what we have to pay them, what they're paid out of the funds. So that's under our 100, but you know, this ain't over. We've got another few months. I'm, I'm thinking, we should ask the town, I don't know, another 20,000? Does anybody have any ideas? Because you know, and I, I asked her today, I said, are you, have you seen apps slow down since the, you know, everyone thought the cutoff date was December 31st, 2020? She said, no, they're coming in. She says, we're getting over 100 a week in here. Not from Townsend, but, you know, from all of the towns they serve. So she said, there's not, it's just, it's just coming, just coming. And, you know, it's not going to stop.
Mr. Chairman, can I, I was trying to take notes, Joan. One is approved, nine are expected to be approved, so 10 with an average of 2,300?
Yes. Plus included in that were two additional that were submitted that were kicked out because the people make too much money.
Okay, so how, how did you jump, what I lost in my notes is how you got from those 10 that we know are, are either approved or soon to be approved.
Yes.
Up to the, the next 18.
Okay, there are 22 additional apps, Jim, in-house that have not been vetted because they're missing some paperwork.
Okay.
So I knocked 22 down to 18, you know, I said a six, so let's say a six are going to get kicked out, right? For whatever reason, so I made it 18.
Okay.
Someone mute the phone number on there, because it keeps getting feedback when you guys talk. Whoever has the phone number.
Oh, you know, I wonder if maybe they're on the TV and the, and the phone.
They just muted themselves, I saw it, so.
So is that clear, Jim, on what she's saying for numbers? Because just to give you an idea, we're up 302% for human service requests right now. That's our, that's been our average since July of last year.
Well, we, so we're still under the 100 that we're at, correct?
Well, I'm projecting, Wayne, that, that we're still under the 100, but I, I think we should have, that's for like now.
Well, we do have, we have the additional money for the, the COVID Relief Fund in hand. We don't, and no one's, Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, but there hasn't been any additional requests from any other town agencies for that money, right? Well, this is something Joan and I spent some time on the phone this morning and then Veronica and I had the opportunity to talk about it. So if you take the $831,000 that Townsend was allocated right out of the gate, and you take what's been committed under round one and round two, and then we've been advised that certain things that FEMA said that they were going to cover, they're no longer going to cover, so we have that additional expense. If you take round one, round two and the FEMA, we have $170,000 plus or minus unattached. There is a request that's come in from the fire chief for $100,000 for turnout gear. So the, the, the fire department guys and gals' uniforms, if they go to a COVID call, it's contaminated, needs to go through a process before they can use it. If they have another call, they don't have anything to wear. So he's looking for that $100,000. That would be something we would be discussing Tuesday night at the board meeting. If that goes to the fire department, there's 70 available. What Joan and I talked about is perhaps putting a soft hold by both of the board, a soft hold on that 70 for the mortgage and rental assistance program. So if Joan's projections come to pass and this, the 100 that they've got on hand gets blown by, there's 70 that's got a soft hold on it. If it doesn't come to pass and, you know, more people that have applied fall off by not qualifying, we've not tied that up and it's available for other purposes that might come up in the next 11 months in the town. So we don't know once the vaccine rollout, for instance, happens, what expenses might present themselves that we're going to need to be able to cover as a municipality that that 70,000 might be appropriate for and might become a priority. So kind of the, me looking at the townwide operation and not specifically just the rental and mortgage is put a soft hold and unless something compelling comes in to the contrary for the board, selectman that says some of those $70,000 need to go to this other purpose, it's there for them. Yeah, I, I agree with Jim. I think, I think putting a soft hold on, not just specifically for the housing, because we have to be judicious with that remaining 70, correct? So I think we just got to be wise about how we spend that. So if it, you know, if we get to the 100,000 mark, we're still going strong with this, with this mess. That money's there if we need to go, say, another 25,000 to it. And parse it out pieces at a time. I'd rather, you know, I don't want to throw the 70 right at it right now. That wouldn't be very smart, in my opinion. So I think putting a soft hold on it and having the selectman control the requests that come in as needed, we, we can take that as part of the regular board business. I don't know, Joan and Veronica, you agree?
All right, I, I mean, so Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, they're going to be in front of us, fire department, Tuesday night for $100,000 for gear? Is that what we're, we're talking? That's going to get used for that?
The, the requests, Chief Boykin has submitted a written request, so that'll be a discussion point. You know, of the 170,000 that is available still for the town's allocation, do you think spending $100,000 on turnout gear is something you would support? Mark will be there, he'll be able to speak to it if you have questions about it. And then, that's why you guys get the big bucks, right? To make these decisions. And if it's, if it's, we can do half of them, you know, and, you know, then, then that's great, you know, whatever you decide. But if that were to be passed, there's still 70 left. And to, to Wayne's question was, how do you and Veronica feel about?
I support, I support Wayne. I think we should definitely keep control of some of that money. We can't just waste it and not have anything in case of an emergency. So I would be in favor of supporting Wayne's thought on that.
My thought on housing funds is if it is mortgage assistance that people are in need of, part, part of your mortgage is escold for your property taxes. And if people cannot pay their mortgage, then their property taxes are not being paid. And so I'm not saying, oh, let's just throw the 70 at it. I would rather throw it in maybe $20,000 chunks as we need.
Yeah, that, that's, that's kind of what I was going with.
It will benefit the town in the long run. Well, maybe not a huge amount, but it will benefit the town if people are able to pay their mortgages.
I do need to interject, okay, only because when people don't pay their mortgages, the bank does pay their taxes, even if they're in arrears. The bank will pay the taxes. If there's no mortgage on the property is when you have a problem. And that has happened, and I can tell you a slew of those.
Because the banks own the houses, right?
That's right. The banks own the houses. So if there are mortgages, the banks do not let the taxes go. I, I can tell you that on a couple in town because I've called on them and the taxes are paid. Okay?
I was going to jump in and say that too, because there's actually talks right now of bailouts for big companies like Mr. Cooper and things like that, because they're running into liquidity issues, paying taxes and insurance while these, while these people are in forbearance. So those taxes are getting paid, the issues are those people that did waive ESROs that may or may not be paying taxes right now.
Okay, thanks, Mike. And Wayne, to, to Lori's other point about landlords, it becomes really tricky too. If people are behind on their rent and the landlords aren't getting that revenue, they're hard pressed from a business perspective to pay the taxes. So that loops back to what Veronica said, which is of all the things we're doing with these COVID funds, this is the one that could most directly impact our bottom line as a town in terms of the revenue. We rely on 63% of our revenue from, from real estate tax. I mean, I'm talking on both sides of my mouth here because I, I think that the rental and housing is the most important part of what we're doing, but I also have other department heads that are saying, you know, hey, you know, we don't know yet what's going to happen in the next 11 months, you know? But I also have other department heads that are saying, you know, hey, you know, we don't know yet what's going to happen in the next 11 months, you know? Support that. And if the hundred gets burned through, then you know, yeah, continue to feed it because that keeps building the houses and keeps our revenue coming in. But we, again, we don't know. Once the vaccine comes and we have to do rollout locally, we don't know what the, the senior center's going to need. We don't know what, you know, the fire department or, or the health. So.
Yeah. And I agree. So that, I think we're, I think we're good on, you know, it's under our control. We'll parse it out in, in sections as we, as we mow forward and with the eye on the buck is it's the picture's going to get a little bit clearer as to, you know, how the vaccine is going to get rolled, I hope, um, um, in the next two months.
Get more funds, Wayne, when and as needed. I, I didn't know that was an option. That's perfect. So that's the best we can do.
Yeah. I'm not, I'm not saying yes right now. Yeah. But let's visit, revisit it when we get to that point.
Right. And the thing that makes it easy for the rental and mortgage, Joan, you and I spoke about this this morning, bless you. We spoke about this this morning is the fire department asking for turnout gear is something that our contacts at the state have to look at. They have to think about, they have to look at the regulations. They have to talk up the chain to the feds and see if that's an appropriate use. We know that rental and mortgage isn't allowed use because it's in their à la carte menu already. So your ask is a quick turnaround. If the selectmen voted on a Tuesday night to, to loosen up 20 grand, we email them the next day, within a couple of days, they're going to fly back to us and say, you're good to go.
Right.
So it can, it can move quickly.
Yep. Okay. That's the best we can do.
Yep. Anything else Veronica on this? I think we covered all five of your things.
I, I think the only, well, the CDBG fuel assistance, we can talk, you know, separately. How do people get that? How do the, do we send them directly to COG? How do people get that fuel? I, I would want to know what the mechanics is of that.
I'd, I'd love, I'd love to have Wayne Dara, who I know has been interested in talking to folks in town at a public meeting, have him, if you wanted it, the next Tuesday, select board meeting, be in attendance to answer those questions because to Joan's point, you know, that's, that's 23 grand that's sitting there.
26.
26. That's sitting there.
He doesn't have to come. What he needs to do is tell us how our residents get it.
Yeah. Just give us.
I don't need him to come and give us a, a long talk. All I want to know is how do we get this into the hands of our citizens? How do they apply? And how quickly do they have, we have only two months, right?
Without an extension, that is correct. Without an additional extension, that is correct.
It's done. It's done April 30th, because the whole thing is over June 30th.
So Jim, can you reach out to Wayne tomorrow?
Not necessarily, Joan, that, that we are, we are in a brave new world right now and there's discussion ongoing, as was the case, we thought the deadline on the CARES funds was going to be December 31st, a month and a half ago, um, a month ago. It got extended a year. CDBG is in the same discussion right now about extending the program further. So, but I will find out specifically to that question.
Okay. Thanks. Can, can I, are, are we ready? Can I say a few things about CDBG, please?
Uh, it's not on the, this is a work session. It's not a, it's not on the agenda. So.
Well, it has to do, it, it is fuel assistance.
Well, all right, quickly.
Okay. So I think it, it, since, since, since the whole fuel assistance window from last year, from November 1st to April 30th, there was zero given out from, by, um, COG for fuel assistance for this town. And, and all, and here we are, this is what, please, January, still zero after I already asked about it in the first part of December. Okay? And then I saw on the, the extension signed on, uh, December 9th, that a letter has gone out to the Monticuce Opportunity Council for help in advertising the fuel assistance portion. I don't, I don't, I, I think we need some hard, solid answers on how we, as quickly as humanly possible, possible, get this money into people. For instance, where are the applications? What is the, um, income eligibility? Where's that chart?
And to that point, to that point, Joan, I think that's what I'm asking Jim to get with Wayne tomorrow. And get that procedure out so we can, can advertise it.
And this, this from an agency who was in their contract, it says they should have been reporting regularly to, to the board. The other thing is, um, is, um, Diane Hansen told me, who's, uh, works with Wayne at COG, that, um, I said to her, I said, well, did you, um, price out a vendor to get the best price for our citizens for their fuel? She said, no, people just call their own vendor. They come and get, fill up their tank and then they give the bill and it gets paid. So if it's that easy peasy, there's no reason why this money shouldn't be spent really soon.
This is the same point you made a month ago, Joan, and the, the discussion at that joint meeting, the Housing Authority and the Affordable Housing Trust. If you listen to the tape, which is online, was that you and I at a minimum, if not with Chaz and or Lori, were going to schedule a meeting with Wayne to have that address. I have reached out twice to you to see if we could do that. You have responded, let me finish. You have responded, Joan, and said, we're not going to do that. We're doing our own review of the information, referred to as a little investigation just last week. Fair is fair. You got to give the guy the opportunity to present the information. And if, if the group agreed to do that, I, I, I think it's bad of us that we haven't done what we said we were going to do.
Okay. I know we are paying them. They have been paid. They have been paid $1,800 to, thus far, to administer the fuel assistance program and zero money of the 26,250 dollars has gone to our citizens. This, uh, this ain't on us. We are not getting paid to administer that program. COG is. I'd like to get this thing. We need to move. That's all I'm saying. We, please, I'm begging you for the people of this town. We need to move. What's the income eligibility? Where are the forms? Who does somebody call? And then boom. If it's as easy as I was told it is, it should have been happening.
And a month ago, had we done what we said we were going to do, we'd have that answer already. That's my only point.
You can, you blame me. I'll take it. Okay.
Let's not get into this. Uh, Jim, please contact Wayne tomorrow and get the information so we can, we can present it.
Chair, may I, may I just ask something?
Sure.
I, I'm availing myself to, um, be able to get this, uh, taken care of as swiftly as possible. So if you need me to help with advertising or talk with Wayne from COG or anything that you need, I'm, I'm availing myself to, to, to the, the board of selectmen.
Thank you, Chaz. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Okay. Um, I think that's all for Housing Authority and Affordable Housing. So thank you guys for coming tonight. Appreciate it.
Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Bye bye.
On to 2.2 TCAM Business Discussion. Steve on the line. I saw him bouncing back and forth, kicking out.
I am here. I landed, so, uh, I'm good now.
No, it's just a different, the, the TCAM topic, not Housing Authority or anything. So you're free to go.
Executives, that's not executive session, right?
No.
TCAM Business Discussion, 2.2 on the agenda.
After we're done with this, it's going to be executive. So yes. Okay, Steve, you want to? As you're walking through the airport, when I'm filling.
So as we stand, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Yeah.
All right. So as we stand right now, um, we have an accountant. Um, I spoke with Dave, Lisa, on myself, we found an accountant. She's on board, but we obviously have no funds to pay her as of right now, but at least we have an agreement with her. She did give us some references for lawyers, which I called today. So reaching out, but we still have an issue. Where we have our funds tied up and that is concerning. Now I did reach out to Mr. Rissette. He is going to go down Friday to the bank and remove himself off of the account, which I'm not sure why it's taken all for this time to do that, but I reached out and told him we needed to go down and please take himself off the account. We're still not, and I know there was, I was looking at some meetings in the past just to see where we are, because I still don't have complete records of everything. But we're still not a 501(c)(3). Nothing was ever filed. I was listening to a meeting around August, I think 18th and with attorneys that were hired to make us a 501(c)(3), you know, with paperwork. There's never been any paperwork filed. So, we're kind of starting from scratch here. And I'd like to get all the information basically from last year up until this point of any communication between the town emails, just to see where we are because it is extremely confusing. And I'll let Dave and Lisa talk because they might cut out here, but, um, that's where we stand. I mean, we're, we're, we're moving things along, but there's a lot of things that was severely mismanaged. And trying to put it all back together and all these things that were supposed to be done, that was never done is, is baffling to me. So Dave, Lisa, if you want to chime in, I'll go from there.
Thanks, Steve.
Well, might help if I unmute myself. Along with what Steve was saying, um, we're slowly piecing the jigsaw puzzle together. So we've got a clear picture of where we stand. We've accomplished a few things. We've got, uh, billing from two different companies from Unitil. The, um, the landlord doesn't pay utilities for the place we're at up there. That's the individual tenant's responsibility. And Comcast internet service up at the same building. We've, uh, I've managed to get both of those switched over and under control. Both of them are under auto pay, which I hope they'll, the auto pay will go through when they are due. If they don't, we will hear from both of those companies probably pretty quickly that we're, uh, we need to get payment to them. The landlord, we've talked to and he's understanding of the situation we're in. Just as an FYI, January rent hasn't been paid yet. And February rent is due on the first, which is in what, three, four days? So we've got to try and get, uh, the, the, the bank account under control. So that way we can operate it. We've got a couple of forms that we need to file. I've been working on that. I've got a couple of questions, Jim. You'd probably be able to answer this, uh, more than anyone else here. The, uh, signature page of the Townsend executed agreement. Does that need to be updated with the current board of directors name or names on that? Uh, currently the only copy we have has the old, uh, president of the corporation's name on it. Do we need to change that?
Which document are you referring to, Dave?
That was the Townsend executed agreement.
Oh, the grant agreement?
Yes. I'm sorry. Yes, the grant.
Nope. The, um, the grant. Well, I can find out more specifically, but my, my response is no, the, the agreement was between the corporation and the town. And at the time, the signature, the signatory was representative of the corporation.
Okay. So that.
I'll ask Adam tomorrow for some, if, if there's a fine point that I'm missing, but no, we have the town and TCAM are the, are the parties.
Understood. Yeah. If you could clarify that, please, because that is one of the documents the, uh, the bank is asking us to provide. And I wasn't sure if we needed updated signatures or if it was good as is. So yeah, if you could do that, that'd be great.
Absolutely. To that point, just sorry to interrupt, but just to that point, I'm not exactly confident that we are set up correctly with the state. I mean, I know we're filed as a corporation. I see that, but though I'm not completely confident on how everything was filed. You know, when it was set up, everything was set up as a corporation, but had, you know, Jerry's name attached to it. And it really can't be set up that way. That's one of the conversations I had with the accountant and one of the lawyers I did talk to just briefly today. Had some concerns. That's why, you know, at the point that I'm at now and the rest of the board is at, is that I really believe once we get a lawyer hired, we need to really have our lawyer go, go through this and make sure this is all the way it's supposed to be. Cause I, I'm, I'm not confident from what I'm seeing so far. So that's why, one of the reasons it's important to get those funds released so we can get a, you know, our own lawyer on staff and have him review, review everything.
Hopefully that'll be. Hopefully that'll be tomorrow or Friday or Sunday, Monday.
I just want to say that when we have, this is nonprofit banking. And again, the account is set up as a nonprofit account with a number that corresponds with the, um, corporation. Uh, and again, I'm talking about something that's already a 501(c)(3), but when we have changed signatories at banks, what we need is that change of director's form, which you guys, I, I believe have done, because I've looked online at the Secretary of State's website. And so if you have that change of director's form, the bank should be able to, uh, give that to you. You may also want to get a certificate in good standing from the Secretary of State's office. Those are the things that we have been asked for before, but DCU should have given you a list of what they want. When the, you know, the original incorporators, with the exception of me, are no longer on the land trust at all. They aren't even listed. And we have put in several change of director's forms in between annual meetings even over the 30 years that we've been in existence. And the bank, when we've changed signatories, they have always accepted those. So it shouldn't require anything more at the state, but this is really, really close to the incorporation date. And so that makes this kind of a special case. It's a little bit different than, uh, you know, changing the directors after you've been, um, incorporated for three years or whatever. So I don't know. You have to work with the bank, I guess.
Well, I do thank you three for stepping up to do this. I know it's a mess.
That's okay. It's a challenge.
I appreciate it though.
I saw Lisa wanted to say something.
Go ahead, Lisa, sir.
I'd like to know how much was originally given to TCAM, period. Flat out before the deposit, if there was any in as separate checks or cash, or just what was the original amount that was given to start the corporation?
The town meeting, Mr. Chairman, the, the town meeting vote was $425,000 to be transferred from cable receipts reserved to TCAM. And of that 425, because we went into the fiscal year by three months, a certain amount was being held back to pay for Hartley's salary and benefits while he was still on the town's payroll until he was transitioned over. That was roughly 11,000. I don't know, Veronica, if you have the exact number. I know we've talked about it. It was 11,000 and change. So I think the net that they got was around,
It was 414, 414 and change. Yeah. Can we see, I mean, is there any documentation of that money being withheld or was held for? I feel like we should have it all.
We have an email from Lori back when we were leading up to town meeting. So I can actually email that to Steve right now and he can distribute it to.
That's fine.
To each of you.
Okay. Next, Jim.
I would like to get just, we want to get a lawyer, just, you know, all the communications from, from back from last January of 2020 up until the present. You know, emails between the lawyers and the board of selectmen. I know, Jim, that you had, uh, because of COVID, was, was, uh, involved signing those, signing stuff just in for the board of selectmen with the, uh, approval of the chair. So just any, you know, everything that we can give a lawyer. So we can take a deep dive and just look at it.
Okay. Um, absolutely. I can forward all those emails tonight before I go home, Steve. And to your point, Dave, your question about the signator, um, I just texted Adam, our town council. Does the grant agreement between TCAM and the town need to be re-executed with a new signature of a current board member? And he writes, um, no, otherwise corporate documents would cease to be binding as soon as the board of directors changed. The deal is between the town. The deal is between the town and the corporation."
Okay, makes sense.
Anything else, Steve?
No, that's all I have. Like I said, I just, for me, I just was talking to a lawyer so we can just make sure, I just want to make sure everything's right. So moving forward, and, you know, even after our terms, if we decide, you know, when our terms end and next another board come in, that it's a very smooth transition. So I'm kind of looking, I'm kind of looking ahead of things.
Okay, great.
I just want to say one thing, Wayne. I guess I'm hopeful that Jerry will, that the funds will be accessible starting tomorrow. But if they're not, I think we should be considering what we can do to help the corporation. Thank you, get the control of the funds.
Veronica, I can almost guarantee you 100% the funds won't be available to us by tomorrow. Harkening back to what you said a few minutes ago about the different forms the banks require. They gave me a list. I talked to a representative directly by phone. She gave me a list of the documents we need to submit to them in order for them to unlock the account for us. So Jerry getting his name off of the account is only one, one item out of about four that needs to be accomplished. I'm hopeful that within the next four or five days maximum, that we should be able to unlock those. I'm just fearful that if there's any, any delay in that, that if any of the billing that's coming in from other companies that are on auto pay, if they get squashed, and then it opens up another loose thread for us to deal with. One thing that I would ask the board of selectmen, if it's at all possible, please, could we get some kind of a document with a copy of the minutes or just a declaration from the meetings where you appointed Steve and I, and then a few days later appointed Lisa? Just to supplement what we do have to submit to the bank for their sake?
Jim, can you help with that?
Yeah, we can actually do it in the form of certified votes, Dave. So instead of just giving minutes that'll have 1,000 other pieces of business on it, we can get certified votes that state a duly posted notice meeting of the board of selectmen this date and time, actions were taken. And the town clerk can certify that. So those will be a cleaner document for you.
Excellent, excellent, thank you, Jim. On my part, so far, that's all I need to move forward with. So any of that that you can get as soon as you can, that would be great. And that'll help us move forward with the bank part of it.
Wayne?
Yes, Joe.
Just, I want to just touch on what Veronica just may have said. Sounds like we've got ourselves in a little bit of a pickle as far as the TCAM part of it. Is there something we can do tonight to take a vote? That we can maybe get some kind of money put somewhere to allow? It sounds like Steve, Lisa, and Dave, they need to go forward with different things. And without money or things being tied up, it sounds like they can't get the accountant paid. They may not be able to get the lawyer going. How do we go forward to just do something temporary? I don't know how we can do it. And then as soon as they get that funds released, so they have control of it, put the money back. How do we move forward with that?
Jim, I think you and Laurie are working on that, correct, with the DR?
Go ahead, Veronica. I know you've been working on it, too.
Well, no, no, let, let, what I wanted to do, we had appropriated 425 at a town meeting, and we only gave 414, plus or minus. And I wanted to, I had asked if we could appropriate, since it was already appropriated, could we give the 11,000 that did not go to TCAM? With the understanding that the money was appropriated? And there is apparently around 90,000 plus in the PEG access account at the, at Town Hall to be transferred. And Steve had sent a letter to us, which you might have seen, Joe, I'm not sure.
Oh, yes, I did.
Earlier this week, asking that the funds be transferred, a quarterly transfer, because the agreement in Section 8 says that quarterly transfers can be made. So Jim, you can explain why this cannot happen.
Sure. Without an appropriation, so leaving aside the 425 and the 11 that didn't get transferred over for Hartley's fee, of the 90 grand that's sitting currently, those are receipts we've taken in quarterly that at the end of the year will be roughly 180 grand. We'll have a town meeting article to appropriate 180,000 to TCAM. Then it is appropriated and in a fund available. Section 8 of the agreement then says, on a quarterly basis, TCAM can ask for their drawdown. We have the appropriation, it's sitting in a reserved account, and quarterly they'll get the drawdown. What we did for year one was appropriated more than a year's worth because it had been a couple of years that it had been building up, plus there was some capital money for the system expansion, and transferred it all to get them up and running in one lump sum. So right now, there's no, what's that?
Saying we're not up and running.
I understand that, but that's not.
No, I understand, I understand.
I guess my.
Right now, there is no appropriation available for Laurie to, to make a payment against. Now, looking at the issue of the 425,000, town meeting said was being transferred, and the fact that only 414 or whatever the number was actually transferred over, that 11,000 that was being held, and Steve, I just emailed it to you, so you should see it pop through Laurie's spreadsheet. That 11,000 and change that was held back for Hartley has been spent on Hartley as a town employee before he transitioned over. So 425, for the benefit of TCAM, has been, has left the building. It is left in 414 or whatever it was to TCAM in their account. And 11,000 paid for Hartley's salary and benefits for the time that he was with us longer than had been anticipated.
Not to interrupt, I guess that's what confuses me. Because looking at the meeting, and I try to go and review all the meetings online with TCAM, and that kind of goes, it kind of contradicts what is actually being said here about the monies. First of all, there was said at the August 18, 18th meeting that that, you know, none of it is, none of it is taxpayer money. It's money that is given by Comcast to, in an agreement, you know, to the town. And I actually, you said, you said, Jim, that it is a, the town is only a vehicle to, on the 18th meeting, to hold those, to hold those funds. You know, and then transfer it over. So 90,000 into, if there's 90,000 sitting in, in an account, then we should be able to access that.
You can't, Steve, because there is no town meeting authorization to release that to you.
Well, why would it need town meeting authorization if it has nothing to do with, if it's not taxpayer money or anything else? That's what's confused me from the August, from the August 18th meeting. That's what, and again, I'm not trying to, you know, argue, I'm just trying to understand.
No, I appreciate that.
I'm just trying to understand it.
The funds, irrespective of the source of funds, whether it's fees received from Comcast under this franchise agreement, or whether it's grant funds that come in, fees for building permits, we take in any number of types of fees for any number of purposes, and they will sit in accounts controlled by the treasurer collector until town meeting says they go someplace else. So we have been, since 2015, when the selectmen negotiated the franchise agreement, been receiving 5% of anything that's spent on Comcast in town. And it comes in as a cable receipt. It goes into a receipts reserved account, and it sits there unless town meeting appropriates it. If you look at prior budgets, you will see that there's an amount of money that's being used as a revenue source to offset the cost of having done cable access, paying for Hartley and paying for his benefits and cameras and, at the time, tapes. There's an amount of revenue that was put forth in the document for town meeting to consider appropriating for that purpose. Right now, we're going to continue to take those funds in. But until town meeting authorizes them going someplace, Laurie can't send them anywhere.
Let me play devil's, let me play devil's advocate here. If, if town meeting doesn't appropriate the funds, then what does that, what happens with that money?
That's, that's exactly the point that I made when the discussion of the grant agreement was before the select board. And we, we got into quite a discussion about, to the extent available, being added in that Section 8. Because ultimately, town meeting makes that decision. And if for some reason, let's just, let's get ridiculous and say that TCAM does something really, really ridiculous with the cable, you know, access program. And town meeting wants to make the point that we think that you did something really ridiculous. So we are going to, as a matter of principle, not vote to transfer those funds. Unless that Section 8 said, to the extent available, we would be in a legal bind because we would have said, we're going to transfer, but we can guarantee through that grant agreement that town meeting will ultimately vote to do it.
And that's why I think the grant agreement is flawed. Because, you know, if that's the case, and, you know, granted, I know it's in the accounts now that we have to get access to. But let's say, for instance, one of the things on the radar that we want to do is put in a studio and start expanding, and, you know, there's a lot of things. Then all of a sudden, you know, we get invested, you know, 200 grand, and I'm just using a number, so those, everybody watching on TV, it's not like I'm spending 200 grand or we're spending 200 grand on a studio. But if we, if we turn it around and appropriate, you know, and we have to have another investment to keep whatever doing going, and the town chooses not to, then that's a serious issue. That's why I really wanted to dive into this again, because it just, it doesn't make sense. It's not making sense that something that is a corporation, that is a vehicle that Comcast is, that Comcast is actually funding, you know, the 5%, that we, that we could.
Yeah, but can't we just put something on this annual town meeting? Something new that, and reword it so that each quarter, the funds will be dispersed?
I guess.
That's in essence what you're doing already, Lisa, is you're voting at town meeting the annual amount of funds that are, at that point, will be on hand because you're, you're really dealing in arrears. You're, you're, right now, we have 90, as Veronica said, in there. By town meeting time, we'll have a full four quarters or 180 grand. We will have a town meeting article to say, to see if the town wants to transfer from receipts reserved, you know, for appropriation cable access to fund the grant agreement between the town and TCAM. And that 180 gets appropriated. At that point, Section 8 kicks in and allows you, as TCAM, to request quarterly drawdowns. If the select board and TCAM at that point say, let's amend the agreement and say it goes to them upfront, a full year, day one, that's, that's between the select board as the contracting authority on behalf of the municipality and TCAM board of directors. But right now.
I understand that. So we could change, though, if we worked on that.
Absolutely, yeah.
Mr. Chair, I guess the chair is gone right this second. Do I have to wait for?
No, I'm here, I'm here, just in the dark, sorry, I'm driving.
You're not you, Steve. That chair.
I'll answer to Mr. Chair.
Hello, Wayne. I guess, I just like to, we've really beat this around quite a bit right now. My question that was asked, okay, and I don't know if Jody can answer this. I don't know, is there anything that we can do as a board right now, just in the short term, to help TCAM just continue until we can fix the problems? Is there any way some sort of money can get transferred? Yes or no?
The, the simple answer is no. And I'll, I'll tell you briefly why. TCAM is a private nonprofit entity. When you have funds that are specific for that purpose, which is what the cable receipts are, town meeting can send those off to TCAM, and everything is cool. Taxpayers' general money, so stuff that we receive as general receipts of the town is government money, and you can't use government money to support a private nonprofit. There's something called the anti-aid amendment in the Massachusetts Constitution. So Laurie is working right now with DOR and the auditors to see if there's any wiggle room on that. But the response so far is, even if we have an appropriation, I have the budget in front of me, selectmen's miscellaneous, you know, with 37 cents, whatever. You have the ability to spend 37 cents, but you can't give it to a nonprofit organization. It's a violation of the Constitution of the Commonwealth of America.
Well, we're not a nonprofit right now.
Not a government entity.
Yeah.
You are under the state.
But you could no sooner give it to.
State, you are.
Don't know on the street. You know, you can't use government funds for a non-government purpose without violating that provision of the Constitution. Unless there's another legal construct, like the grant agreement with TCAM, but that requires an appropriation. The appropriation that exists has been spent.
Is there any way, Jim, that you can ask council, is there any work around this whatsoever? So we can move forward and we don't have to have this?
We, we have, I know that, Adam, Adam and I have talked about it. Adam and Laurie have talked about it. I don't know, in any of your conversations as individual members with council, if you've addressed it, but the answer is no. What we've got going right now is with, with DOR, is there any workaround to the anti-aid amendment prohibition on using general town budget monies on an outside entity? I've done it in the past in a very limited way in another community where we had the Community Action Committee, you know, they do the food bank and medical trips and stuff, they're a private group. And I was able to draft a document that said, because they are providing a service to the town, that if they weren't here, we might have to do that, we can cut this deal with them. So we're working right now with DOR to see if we can do a very short-term deal like that. If TCAM didn't exist and wasn't paying Hartley to do this meeting, we would have to do it, therefore, can't we just throw them a couple of bucks? It's a legal construct that's really tricky to do, trying to get that done. I think that they're going to free up their bank accounts quicker than we're going to get that deal worked.
It sounds like that to me, too, Jim.
Well, that was my, that was my point, you know, is why don't we, obviously, if nothing can be done right now, why don't we, you know, Dave is saying that maybe in four to five days, we might have better answers. And then in four to five days, we don't have any answers, then, you know, 20, you know, we call it, we, we circle back around and then try to figure out other options. But in four to five days, we'll have answers.
Okay, Dave, just keep us informed.
I want to say one thing about Section 8 of the agreement. Nowhere in here does it say, "Subject to the appropriation of town meeting."
It also doesn't say that you're breathing oxygen right now, Veronica, but that's just one of the immutable facts of life.
Well, that might be the case, but, you know, maybe it's understood somehow.
It froze up, Veronica.
That's what, and that's exactly to Veronica's point, that's where I got confused reading it. Because that's why I didn't see anything. And again, shame on the lawyers who put it together. And that's why, again, I'm, you know, when we get a lawyer, you know, we got it.
We're starting from scratch.
Documents again, that should be in there. Because on face value, you know, I'm thinking, okay, well, it's, you know, quarter four was up at the, you know, December 31st. And, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to request, which I did, the quarterly funds, not, you know, within a hearing that, well, it has to be appropriated to town meeting, which again, not until, there's not until maybe May, you know, if it doesn't get delayed. So I, I get what we're saying, but that's, that should have been put in. That, that's a, that threw me for a loop, and that's why I asked the questions I asked. Because I didn't, it didn't say anywhere.
Okay, I'm good with it, thank you.
I think we've got a better understanding of the scenario we're all dealing with, with this. And, you know, with, like I said, hopefully, no more than four or five days. If everything goes smooth with the bank, they accept our paperwork as is, then this would all be a moot point. But at the very least, we all know where we stand right now and what may have to happen in the near future, so.
Well, it sounds, and just, and I'm just going to make a point. I may not be well-liked on this, but it sounds like what's happening, I get this COVID, I get all that. We've really empowered certain people to do things that the board is not physically getting involved in approving. We need to really rethink that. We need the board to be involved in all these decisions. And if we make. decisions. And if we make the wrong mistake, shame on us, such be it, we move forward. But we can no longer just continue with one person signing or doing anything because we are afraid to be together on COVID. That's only my take is what I'm getting out of this.
As long as the presumption isn't that a mistake made because all of the documentation is, as was approved by our councils. That's all.
I'm going to disagree with you on that.
Did they read those files, Jim? Because they are so outdated.
Lisa, excuse me. Jim, I'm going to disagree with you. I did have conversation with counsel today in depth after the email I got from you. And what you just said, that all our counsel approved it. I won't get into saying what he said. We won't do that. But I'm going to disagree with what you just said on that. We'll move that to another meeting.
All right. Let's move forward on this. So TCAM guys, thank you very much. I appreciate the work you're doing.
Wayne, before they go, before they go, I want to make sure I have all of the asks. So Steve, all of the communication between the town and the attorneys in both sides from beginning to date. So all that communication, I can get all that over to you. The second is Dave, you wanted some representation that, we talked about doing it in the form of a certified vote from the clerk showing your appointments, right?
Yep.
The ask was for the breakdown on the 11-plus thousand dollars for the Hartley. And I emailed Laurie's spreadsheet over to you, Steve, already. So you have that. Was there any other specific ask? I just want to make sure I got it covered.
That's what I needed, just the documents to, I know the emails I asked for, but just the documents, just to make sure we're just up to date with, with everything we're supposed to have.
No, absolutely. Everything would have been via email, documents attached to emails. So I'll, I'll be able to just forward all of that stuff off electronically to you.
I appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thanks, guys, again.
Okay. Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Thank you for coming.
We have two
Right after this.
Okay. All right. Onto executive sessions. Can I get, we have two executives. Can I get a motion to move into executive session, please?
I make a motion, we move into executive session at 8:23.
You got to read the, you have to read the
Oh, I am sorry. Sorry, sorry. I make a motion, we move into executive session pursuant of GLC 30AS 21A, paragraph 5, to investigate charges of criminal misconduct or to consider the filing of a criminal complaint.
Can I get a second?
Veronica Kell, second.
All those in favor?
Joe Shank, aye.
Veronica Kell, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. And the second one? And put on the end of this, Joe, that we're not going to be returning the open session.
And we are not, all right, our second one. Okay. I move that we move into executive session pursuant to GLC 30AS 21, paragraph A, section 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with a non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiation with a non-union personnel, treasurer, collector. And we will not return out of executive session.
Can I get a second?
Veronica Kell, second.
All those in favor?
Joe Shank, aye.
Veronica Kell, yes.
And Wayne Miller, yes. Hartley, thank you. You can take us off.
Thank you for